Please join me in the flag allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, come under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all like input today. Seeing none amendments to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question that I think I would like to see on the agenda. I also managed to discuss the status of a request that is in front of planning and zoning that's waiting at away the meeting. Is that right?
I'm sorry, what?
The P and Z meeting is in schedule tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, then I withdraw my request.
Any other amendments to the agenda? I will be adding in our appointments. Should be in front of you, a new member, Autumn Lustfield. She comes to us from Market Ambulance Service to assist the service and do standby calls and sporting events. Tim, is there anything else you wish to add to that that's not in this letter?
She's not here tonight. Sorry, she's taking a prayer med class.
I guess that's an acceptable excuse. She's already a member over there now, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's item D. Please add that instead of none appointment to EMS of Autumn. Any other additions or changes to the agenda as presented? Hearing done of the mayor's report. We'll start with ethnic colleges having a community gathering on Saturday from eight to nine thirty in the Sunstrom Building. For those that can make it, please join and hear the things that are going on in Bethany. To talk about their reports and thank the community for their support is what I understand.
We have to tell your friends.
What day is that?
Saturday.
This coming?
This coming Saturday from eight to nine thirty at the Sunstrom Building.
Eight AM?
Eight AM. As I went around the day and before I left town, just kind of looking at recycling. I appreciate everybody that is doing that and recycling has been close to my heart for a long time. There are several houses that don't use the blue bin. So if you see your neighbors aren't good, please come on in because that really makes a big difference in the landfilling and keeps trash out of those areas and do our part for ecology and that. February meetings, there is the meeting of P and Z tomorrow. Benny, was that enough to answer your question of?
It is.
Okay. We're going to move into the consent agenda. What is your desire?
Moving through.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? All those in favor, please answer Gary.
You're a whip could be. Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Item seven, P and Z, I don't see if you've been there unless you're.
When we see a general community tomorrow?
It's actually relatively lengthy. We're going to look at a potential annexation request, zoning recommendation of Dr. John Riggs. We can do that in advance of the annexation. We haven't had a request here. This relates to the Auburn future purchase of ground east of Scotts Kirkway. Home town food, sorry. The desire of purchasers to buy another forty feet of ground outside the city limits. And when it's annexed, we're going to see through. John says that we can do that in advance of a request. We're just, I talked to Scott today, we're just kind of waiting for a phone call on that. Let's see what else. We're going to take first look at the sign code update that we need to do. Talk about the Friday report relates to Supreme Court decision. Political science can no longer be discriminated against, so we've got to figure that out. Slide is already done, it's way of the law. The bylaws, I want to take a look at the bylaws. We haven't had a current set of bylaws for P and Z in, I believe, fourteen years, sixteen years. So we're going to review that, make some changes, try to clarify the meeting schedule. I think that's been a little misunderstood, so we want to do that. And then we're going to take first look at the comprehensive plan review that is required by the bylaws. And then whatever else may come up.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, on that, we have refreshment number, we have a full P and Z committee members.
We have nine members. We have some changes that are coming up. We anticipate a resignation in fall. We have a pending potential resignation. I don't want to name names because.
Sure. But at this point, you're, you have a committee.
And then in April, we'll be trying to.
Replace.
Replace three members that will come up or reappoint. Expect one of them may resign, so potentially we have three requests on the board.
With that in mind, council and the public that's listening tonight, keep in mind, if you do want to become a part of or know somebody that would like to be a part of the city government, please refer those names onto myself and I'll make sure the different committees, staff and that also, those recommendations, please be thinking about those so we can bring those forward in May.
Yes.
In May, so. All right, thank you, Gary. Item number eight, old business. Greg, do you want to address this for us?
In January, the motion was made and approved to forgive the debt of Bethany College in the amount of $114,000. Let me start it over here.
Three forty six?
Three forty six fifty. Well, we had numbers. From a staff perspective, we were looking at the wrong number. The number we should have been looking at if we're wanting to forgive the full amount of the debt was $117,000, $114.81 because the $114,000 number reflected the balance after a payment in February. So this is a proposal to forgive the remaining $2,768.31 outstanding electric debt.
What is your desire?
Moving through.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion on the forgiveness of $2,768.31? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Becky, yes. Eno?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Oh, abstain.
Okay. Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to new business. Item A, I'll phone Gary to talk to us about mulch.
This is a budget item for 2016. This is replacement of a playground mulch at Wyden Valley and to some extent the Tom T Playground in Riverside Park. We're going to focus on Wyden Valley this year. We purchased this product from Foster Wood Products. I would provide two of the bids, but we don't have anything that's even close. A lot of that has to do with just the logistics of delivering the material and where the material can be ground up. This is by far our best deal. We've also had a lot of leftover foster wood products that have been excellent company to work with. And I'm asking for a, this is actually an identical amount from two years ago, $2,155.50 for a truckload delivery.
That's one truck?
One truck, nine cubic yards.
And is this a wood product?
Yes, it is.
What is your desire?
Have we approved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion, is that, is it a wood product?
It's a certified wood product designed and ultimately manufactured to be splinter free, free of typical wood allergens. Walnut is one particular wood that tends, or allergies related to that, so it's free of that kind of wood. It's a very consistent product and it lasts a while, certainly much more, a lot longer than your typical garden mulch. We get about two to three years. What happens, it just compacts, go figure.
They call it an engineer microproduct, yeah.
But it's not tires.
It's not the tires, no.
No, it's wood.
Gary has it compact and all that, does it ever decompose into dirt? So you have a buildup of dirt underneath for you?
Yes, we do. In fact, I'm glad we brought it up because we're looking at ways to fluff up the existing playground. We're down about two truckloads right now. It would take two truckloads to bring it up to the level that it was originally designed. Now, I'm not saying that it's unsafe. I mean, you certainly have a lot of bounce left in the surface, but it just doesn't look right. Some of these features in the playground are a little higher than we'd like to see them. Anyway, I have kept all of them looking into ways that we can amend the soil and just get rid of the compaction. I mean, go figure, we had a lot of kids playing on playground and over time, it's like driving a steamroller over, you know, over a period of fourteen years. So we'll do this first. And part of the timing here too, and I want to bring this up as well, I want to bring this load into our way. And I want to try to find money to do another load in April. In April, I'll have launchers from the high schools. I'd like to have them work on that particular project. Like I said, we need two truckloads. I'd like to divert some of this and remove some part of the panel. So that's another issue for another day. I'd like to see this approved so we can get it on the road and install some plastic.
Gary, on that, though, you have other things there that you.
And I want to just visit how a few of the bids.
Bring it up to speed.
Depending on how this goes.
You bring up Wyden Valley up to speed.
Yes.
Additional questions for Gary? Gary, please ask them what they wish.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Wyden Valley rebuild that we'd like to do this year at the park. Fourteen years ago, it was built, actually, sorry, twelve years, 2004 is one of the voluntary efforts raised money and built it. We've done an inspection and a review a couple of years ago and we saw some problems at the time. We really haven't dealt with that issue. And I think it's time that we look into a formal rebuild. There are three things that we need to consider. The first one being the engineering or the identification of what the problems are on the lowest end. Greg and I will go up there and we'll look around and we'll say that we need to do this or that. And that's probably not enough to come up with the scope of the project. On the opposite end, we could hire Leathers and Associates, the original consultant on the project, to come to town. And actually, they'll do a fine job of reviewing the problem areas, coming up with, I mean, it's an isolation piece. They'll evaluate the safety conditions, overall conditions. They'll come up with a report and recommend replacements, rebuilds that will bring the thing up to standard. It'll cost $1,500. And we don't have that in our budget at this time. That's kind of the catalyst of the options. Another option, Rick would probably be familiar with this, and that would be the Certified Playground Safety Inspector area. This is nationwide certification. Trying to actually go and review playground equipment. We could, there's a class available marks up here in the state. And we could send someone there to take a three-day class, become certified and come back and do the actual review and assessment of the playground. That's $560.
Plus lodging?
Plus lodging.
Sure.
Yeah, two nights. And I'm humble near the end my time. David Elliott would certainly be an appropriate certificate candidate.
There is some expense due with the equipment to measure head sizes between boards and this and that.
Thanks, you're right.
You'll have to have some equipment, it's like three hundred something bucks to.
It's called Stanley.
That's unique.
I have to believe, I have to believe that there are certified playground safety inspectors.
One of us, one of us here.
That we could hire.
You? I'm the one that is.
Well, that was going to be my next opportunity of our friends north or south of us. My first city of Salina, but now that we have somebody in town.
That would be something, that's what I would recommend them to do, although, you know, the Leathers and Associates proposal is kind of sweet because you just end up with that design of a rebuild. We'll have to do.
Safety inspector, we can get a list of what's wrong.
And, oh, you're right, we get a list of what's wrong, not necessarily a list of what we have to go by to replace. And yeah, so we'd have to do additional work with, you know, working with the inspector.
There is, there's still a fund, there is still a fund in the community foundation. Every year we get a letter saying you have this much eligible to grant and we've always just sent it back to the fund. So this seems to me that that would be a very appropriate use of those grant funds.
Part two. Sorry.
Sorry, sorry to steal your thunder.
Gary, before we go there, I said, I see crowdfunding, is there a Gary funding? They have to pay next month and Ireland?
Part two fundraising. And this is what I've identified. Very, we'll start with that. The Smoke About Community Fund Foundation has a playground improvement fund currently available, spent $586. So that fund balance is sitting at fourteen, about $14,000 now. But of course, we're going to draw, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't draw into the fund, we draw off what's, whatever it is. Revenue in that year. Not a lot of money there, but something certainly considered, you're up on. Going back to the real source, to the Parks Department Applewood Plan for 2016. I've got $3,000 of mulch, we've just spent $2,100 of that. There are two items though that stand out, and that's a renovation Riverside restroom, which was planned kind of with the anticipation of the festival in, in the Midsummer's Festival to be held in Riverside Park. Another line item, also $7,500 budget in 2016, and that's the Dog Park. So we actually have roughly $15,000 in the Parks Capital improvement plan. I'm not handing it up for this particular project, but the money is there. Ideally though, we're fundraising, we're private sourcing, we're doing whatever we can to engage the community to rebuild this community jewel that was originally built by the community. So that's where my focus would be.
You know, this project and trail project, I think, were great projects within this community and really brought pride in the town together and those kind of things, I think, have been. There are others along the way too, but just as long as it scanned out early as everybody came to get over.
There are anecdotes of people that moved to town because of the funky development, because of that particular attraction, so.
And there are families that come and stay here the weekend because of that. So it is important to ask them.
If you're going to throw a birthday party or a pre-birthday party, if you're talking about crowdsourcing or, that's your, that's your topic right there, help us, you know, help us hit the base that we want for the 15th birthday.
We would be able to have letters come back and after fourteen, fourteen years, is it, twelve, what'd you say?
Twelve, sorry.
Twelve, four years. After twelve years, we come back, look at this, you know, these are the eyes that help to design. I think that would have a great value for us.
Finally, the topic of this volunteer support. We certainly want to involve the community. And I don't think it's going to be a problem at all to work with the original building committee, a lot of those folks still around. I've already talked to a few. Hawanas, a lot of city groups, Hawanas is a project and Bill Roth is on board to do whatever he can to participate in gathering us and support and public relations and just the outreach. So that's just to bring you up to speed and around mulch is first step.
Would that be tied into such percenting speed or is that too far down the road?
I think it's a little too far down the road, but this is my initial thought. Now that you've brought the mulch up again, is there potential that whoever does the evaluation would be better, would get the best impression before that new mulch was put down? I mean, if they need to look at, I don't know, I'm not a construction person, footings or the base or.
I'm not sure that would make a lot of difference.
Okay, that's what I'm going to add, okay?
I think we can get some pretty good advice from other Parks departments on how they've done it. Actually, I haven't seen anything wrong with the road until I'm in there. But that does, Gary, the soil, it does fluff it up and it reduces the compaction. It'll be timeless in the, but I'm sure we can have that done before loads deliver. That's kind of the way I'm leaning, but I want a little bit of backup from someone who's done.
Have you talked with letters, are they still in the business?
No, I haven't. I'm going back to some 2015 stuff that, that.
The last year they were.
Yeah, they were doing pretty good last year, I talked to them. I'm not sure about something else about what I've seen.
That's a good question.
Any additional items on, on this? That's the way I'm going, Gary, I just appreciate that and potentials, yes, but.
Do we, do we need a motion on mulch or we have a second, what do we have for the discussion, right?
This came after the approval.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Gary. Item D, the electric crimping tool.
The Left Department would like to have the authority to buy the electric crimping tool. This is used to splice lines and other things. Currently, it's a manual process to do this. So they're up in the air basically doing cricking the lines together like that. This would allow it to be done by this electric crimping tool. One thing about it is it does have different dies for different size of line. But the dies for the manual crimping would work with the electric crimping tool.
What is your desire?
Moving through, second.
Been moved and seconded to extend, expand $1,753.25 with Chris Davis.
Plus tax.
Plus tax, thank you. Additional discussion?
Why do we have to pay taxes? Because we have to fund the taxable. Oh, yes, yes.
We're doing our part for the state.
Yes, dude.
Roll call, please, I appreciate that.
Yes. Eno?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried, let's go to item C, which is grant proposals serviced, Greg?
A proposal to have efficient, efficient grant payer services, which is a grant search, online grant search service. Would allow to five users to access the service to search for potential grants through not only federal and state government, but also through foundations. The cost of this is $1,495.
What is your desire in this?
Moving through.
Been moved and seconded?
I didn't, who did what?
Rick.
Moved and they had seconded.
Or the last person. We both spoke together.
What is your desire, I'm sorry, let's have a discussion.
How long have we been out without a grant service or research service?
Just over here.
Just over here, you missed it.
Well, you know, the prior service we had was expensive, wasn't highly effective. We, at least from the webinar that we saw on this, when I say we saw, it was Holly, Gary, myself, Cassie and Chief. And you're able to zero down a little more. I mean, we would get, you'd search a grant service, the prior service for, let's say, something on water. Well, you couldn't narrow it down. I mean, you did great, it's about the Great Lakes and things like that that just were not, oh, so. You're just filtering through all the list filters. I mean, if you're not eligible for it, it's not going to come up in your search. And it's considerably less than what the other service was. And it's $1,495. I think it was a general consensus of the five of us that it's, at that amount, it's at least worth trying for a year. And then if we're not successful or it's not yielding results for us, then we don't run it. I think this is something you have to have in the world, looking for grants, you just can't find them otherwise. So once you find a grant, who writes them? We typically write them our own, yes. I mean, they will write them for $150 an hour. We'll contract with them, she writes grants for, we'll pay her $25 an hour.
Additional questions?
And this is a calendar year contract or?
It is twelve months.
Roll calls, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Item carries, item D, EMS building architect agreement, a bando.
In the process of working through the rural development paperwork, we received, they call it a tax management of modifying the general contract that was approved December 21st. Actually, we had to modify that again to update it to the 2007 version of the AIA contract. This revises some of the terms within that, such as requiring a resident inspector, which we've already visited with them at least 45 days ago, that we won't have to have one, but we'll have to go through the process of writing a letter and saying, we do have a, we do have a building inspector that will handle inspections. Some of the things it talks about, requirements of the bidding process for the architect and that, well, we had the architect way before we ever had the rural development loan. It's been weeks as I read, Bill, you read it today, what were some of the other?
No, they were, I mean, they were pretty basic, there were minor changes.
Yeah.
As in any form of contract, somebody gets a hold of it and wants to have a little input, but it really didn't change any of the major. Your satisfaction, I'm fine with it.
Yes, when I, when I wrote the cover sheet for this, Bill was out of town, hadn't had a chance. a chance to review it, that's why my recommendation was written the way it was written. He has, well, he reviewed it today and didn't have any issues with it. I've also spoken with the architect and they didn't have any issues with it either, so.
What's your desire?
Been moved and approved.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Benny?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried. I have no knowledge of an executive session. Others?
The new iPads, Gary, you might leave your iPad and I will get Cassie work on it and updated. Or you can bring them up.
We do get them.
No, the new iPads have arrived. If you would like to use your current iPad so that it can transfer the data from one to the other, she will begin that process.
David, he'll bring over your background music. Any others, anybody else? I, Benny? I just wanna make, well, I was out, I was out driving around this weekend and that our public works and everything, we're finding out there, looked really great, and that's gonna be some gray screening when they grow up and that I'm really pleased with the neighbors and all that. If you gotta see the futures, you're gonna cover those up for them and that, so I think that was a great project that we, that we did there, so.
We're just gonna make motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
If you have the same sign, thank you very much.